Welcome everyone to the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. I have a motion to open the regular business meeting. Teresa and a second from Xavier. All in favor? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the status of the open Assistant Superintendent position as well as potential terms and conditions. A motion from Teresa and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Thank you. We'll be back at seven thirty. Welcome back everyone to the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Regular Board of Education Meeting. I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to the public session. A motion from Teresa and a second from Xavier. This is becoming a habit. All in favor? Thank you. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Okay. Sorry about that. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. A motion from Michelle and a second from Tom. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? That's everyone. We have FYI on the budget transfers. Any questions or comments on that? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants which were certified for payment on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. A motion from Xavier and a second from Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone. That brings us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. We were just here a week ago, so there shouldn't be too many, but Michelle.
I have one. I want to congratulate the inaugural Blue Devil Girls Golf Team on their first win last week against West Babylon. Super proud.
I have a quick one. I just wanted to congratulate Woodhall on their career day. It was a huge success and I think it's really great that we talk about careers at a young age. There were some really great careers represented from firemen, policemen, hairdresser, really cool ones, music producers. It was really great. The kids had a great time and it was just great to see how excited they were. It was nice.
Thanks for volunteering your time.
Saturday, holding a spring cleanup. It's our thirteenth annual spring cleanup. It's at thirteen New York Avenue here in the station. We go from two to four. If you need to make up some community service hours, we will sign off on your community service hours. Everyone's welcome to come. It's a great event. It's the thirteenth month, would have been fourteen if it hadn't been for COVID.
Just one reminder, this Thursday, April twenty-seventh, Parents' Night Out at the American Legion Hall for the proceeds going to the Flower Hill PTA featuring local band Anarchy on the Bay.
I'll remind everybody about the upcoming Septa fundraisers on Sett and Sounds. There's still time to get your tickets. One of the best events of the year. Definitely reach out to them. There's like an electronic invitation that you can just click on. Anybody else? Mr. Polanski?
I don't have much this evening. It is obviously middle of April. We're done with spring recess and we are approaching the fourth quarter of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I ask that we slow it down a bit because this is, it's going to be an interesting two months for me personally, but I'm looking forward to a great end of the year. It's been a phenomenal year and this is a special night because we have so many students and their parents and families here tonight, parents, guardians, families, siblings, et cetera, to honor some of the beautiful children that we have in Huntington for so many fantastic accomplishments. And this is the time of year where those end of year celebrations begin and we're all looking forward to them. One other thing, just to reiterate, I know that the Board is aware of the fact that they have given me the authority to bring us into a class action lawsuit against Jewel Labs Incorporated for some of the damages done to children across the country, really. There are numerous districts from Maine to the southwest corner of California that have participated in some of these suits and we are going to gain something from this, actually. We've just submitted all the final paperwork that will result in some monies coming to the district as damages for some of the dangerous activities that children have engaged in because of the poor marketing tactics of a company that has really not done the right thing for adults or children, but specifically for young people. So I thank you for allowing us to participate in that and it will end up being a lucrative outcome.
Excellent. All right. That brings us to our first public commentary. I'll remind everyone, or inform you for the first time, if this is your first board meeting, that public commentary is open to all of our residents and our staff and faculty. You have three minutes to speak. When you come up, please identify yourself and your affiliation with the school district. There's a form to fill out, just with your name and address and some basic information. You may speak on any subject. We ask that the first subjects be on those items for discussion and action. And then with time remaining, we usually allot thirty minutes for any other topics other than personnel matters or matters that involve naming any particular students. So at this time, I invite anyone up that wishes to speak. There is another opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak, but if you'd like to speak now, please just come right up to the podium. Okay. Seeing nobody coming to the podium, we'll move on to our items for discussion and action. The first one being our student recognition. I want to welcome all the parents and students that are here with us tonight. It's very exciting and we can't wait to hear about all your accomplishments.
So I will begin this evening where there's no particular order here, but we're going to start with, I'm going to invite Mr. Olivi up to the lectern so he can introduce our National History Day program and help us honor some of the fantastic student representatives of that program. Thank you, Mr. Olivi.
Okay. So Huntington's students once again did a great job representing our district on Sunday, March twenty-sixth at Hofstra University at the regional competition for History Day. In fact, several students from Huntington High School and Finley were featured on the News Twelve segment that they ran that Sunday evening, highlighting the contest. So that was kind of a special thing. That Tuesday afternoon, the virtual awards presentation was posted and we had three projects placed and one project received a special award. We will be sending two projects to states and states will take place at the end of April. We're very proud of all of our students as they competed against almost six hundred students and over three hundred and fifty projects from across Long Island. And here are our winners. I hope everyone's here tonight. So if I could ask Ruby Hoffman to come up, if Ruby is here. Ruby had a senior individual exhibit called Stephen Biko, a frontier in South Africa, and she won second place in senior individual exhibit. Our second recognition tonight is a group and these students came in second place in senior group website. And if you're here, I'd like to call up Janelle Marquin, Andrea Manimunos, and Damaris Manimunos. Congratulations. 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 Their project was Que Viva Mexico, Chicano Movement, and that was a website, senior group website. These young ladies will be going up to the state competition. As will Ruby. Ruby's going to go up to the states as well. Okay. The next group I'd like to call up is Hillel and Shayna Linker, if you're here, come on This duo won third place in senior group website. Their project was on a topic very special to me, Taiwan, China's island frontier. And the last group to be recognized did not place, but they received a special award. Is Jessica Bree and Haylene Torres here? Okay, I'll just recognize their topic. They won outstanding entry on aviation or military history sponsored by the Cradle of Aviation and their group website was quite interesting. It was on dogs in warfare, combating frontiers and forwarding history. So it was quite an interesting topic. So those are our winners. introduce the Suffolk County champion, two years running, Blue Devil Mock Trial Team.
Good evening, everyone. It does give me great pleasure to introduce a number of our outstanding students this evening. And I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Polanski, and the members of Central Administration for giving us all the opportunity to have our students recognized here this evening. The first group of students that I'll be highlighting tonight is our unbelievably phenomenal Huntington Mock Trial Team. As you know, they are back-to-back Suffolk County Champions. They're currently undefeated and they are working hard to cap off their season as state champs in May. I've had the pleasure of seeing them perform in court at the county finals and these young people are truly a sight to behold. When you watch them in action, it is perfectly clear that they put in literally hundreds of hours in preparation, along with their legal advisor, Mr. Palacios, and their advisors, Ms. Biagi and Mr. Outson, who couldn't be here tonight, this evening, because they're actually in Manhattan preparing for the big trade show and competition with our virtual enterprise firms. So they send their well wishes as well. And they'll be at the Javits Center this week. So I want to thank the members of the team, all of you, for your hard work and Mr. Palacios for your guidance and incredible dedication to the team. This group certainly represents Huntington in the best way possible and we simply couldn't be more proud of them. The members of our mock trial team are, and if you could come up and get your certificates and take a photo, Isabella Carecia Johnson, Lindsay DePine, David J.B. Nina Facilla, William Fallon, Andrew Ganley, Angie Hernandez Ramos, and Dowan Purval. You guys are just awesome. Really awesome. So congratulations and good luck at the states. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Come on up. I mean, there's a microphone here. How would you keep them away from it, you know? Thank you for all you guys are doing.
Good evening. My name is Angie Hernandez Ramos and I am the president and captain of the mock trial team. I would like to start off by thanking the Board of Education as well as our district for all the support and aid that you've given us. I'd like to also introduce you to a fellow member of the mock trial team, Nina Facilla.
Good evening. My name is Nina Facilla and I'm a sophomore captain on mock trial. We also thank the coaches, Ms. Biagi, and teacher advisor, Mr. Outson, and of course, our incredible attorney advisor, who I think you guys might know, Mr. Xavier Palacios, who goes above and beyond coaching us to be our absolute best in and out of the courtroom. We gained many newcomers this year, but after spending countless hours practicing and practicing and practicing, we were able to secure our spot as the two thousand and twenty-three county championships, champions, placing us in the top eight teams in the state. As a highly involved student, I can state with absolute certainty that this is one of the most special programs that I've ever had the privilege of being a part of. The connections formed throughout this experience is truly unlike any other. The team really forms a close bond, being able to, despite what we do outside of mock trial, we work together to reach a common goal. The amount of knowledge that we've gained through mock trial is remarkable and is applicable to all aspects of life, from grasping and practicing law, understanding how to effectively do research and apply those facts, building skills in teamwork, leadership, time management, and public speaking, and of course, learning how to effectively argue an objective with poise in a respectful and concise manner, which I'm sure my parents are thrilled about. I have so much to owe to this exceptional program and I couldn't be more grateful to be a member. I could go on and on, but thanks to mock trial, I've been taught how to deliver my point within a time limit. So now I'd like to introduce our extraordinary senior and president, Angie Hernandez Ramos.
Thank you, Ms. Facilla, for that. Well, mock trial has just been such a great experience and really, we are made of such strong individuals from all corners of our school. We have athletes, musicians, theater kids, really anyone you can think of. It is due to mock trial and the attention and help that we get from our advisors that really refines us and allows us to become individuals that can really hold our own in situations that are highly, highly stressful. I'd like to thank all of you guys once more for all of the support and all of the help in the, I want to say, the maintenance of this great program that really has allowed us all to become confident individuals that will thrive in any situation that we may face ourselves in the future. Thank you.
I know I speak for all of the board when we say best of luck, or as we say in the theater, break a leg at the state championship.
Congratulations once again, folks. Okay, next I'm going to invite, I think he's still here, our athletic director, Mr. Hoops, to the lectern to introduce some of our fall and, actually, all of our fall and winter all-state student athletes. This has been a transformation of sorts over the past couple of years in athletics. We've added a number of new programs and obviously through mock trial, through National History Day, through many of the other things that we've been doing through the years and some of which are new over the past few years, trying to provide our students with as many opportunities and choices as possible. And I have to thank all of the folks who are running these programs and working with our children for making that happen. So I thank you, thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Hoops.
We'll begin with Huntington's two Suffolk Zone Award recipients. The Suffolk Zone Chapter of the New York State Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance recognizes two individuals from every Suffolk High School's graduating class. The award criteria involves achievement in phys ed and health, overall academic performance, outstanding character and leadership in classes and during school-wide activities. Our first recipient is Gianna Fort, who's been on the high honor roll during every academic marking period throughout the four years of high school. She's a New York State Scholar-Athlete. She's in three separate academic honor societies. She's participating in the school's career internship program. She served as captain of the soccer, basketball, and lacrosse teams, won awards in all three sports, volunteered as a youth coach, collected food for donation to the Helping Hand Rescue Mission, participated in a holiday gift-giving initiative for children from struggling families. She's done it all. Stony Brook University has recruited Gianna to play on its NCAA Division One lacrosse team. She plans to study health science. Our second recipient is Anthony Nunziata, who has also excelled academically, is also a multiple-time New York State Scholar-Athlete. He's earned varsity letters in football, wrestling, and lacrosse, serving as captain and quarterback of the football team, captain and face-off specialist currently for the lacrosse team, a hard worker on and off the field, a member of four different academic honor societies. He also has been on the high honor roll throughout high school, volunteered to help the homeless and the hungry through a variety of charitable organizations. Yale University has recruited Anthony to play on its NCAA Division One lacrosse team. He plans to study economics. It's a pleasure to introduce boys swimming coach Meg McConnell, who will speak briefly about state champion Pierre Leroy and all-state swimmers Evan Spagnuelli, Lucas Spagnuelli, and Max Leroy.
Hi. These are our amazing boys. In a funny twist, I'm sure you could tell by their names, they're related. We got two sets of siblings, which is, it's funny, I have not had this in a while in swimming, but when I was growing up, swimming was always a family thing, so it's kind of nice for me to see this coming back. So all four of these boys are all-state. They, at our Suffolk County Championship, they took second in the medley relay, went up to states, and took eighth, so that made them all-state. Max, you'll see, there's another funny family thing. Max took fifth in the counties in the five hundred free, just put that in the back of your head. Lucas took fifth in the hundred fly. Put that in the back of your head. We go upstate. Not only did we have the amazing relay team, but Evan and Pierre swam in individual events. And so in a funny twist, Evan crushed it in the hundred fly. Something funny going on here. He ended up taking second in the county, but he was fifth in the state in the hundred fly. I'm sensing a theme. And then Pierre, of course, just crushed his two hundred free, got second in, you know, in the state, which made him all-county, all-Long Island, and all-state. But then towards the end of the meet, everybody's favorite or very least favorite event, the five hundred free, Pierre came out, state champ, and that he's also amongst all his other honors is All-American consideration time. So, you know, as they both did the five hundred, there's a whole family thing going on here. Evan has just committed to UPenn, Pierre is off to Loyola, so now we're down to just these two brothers to hold up. And I have bright hopes. And we thank you for supporting us. I've been involved in this program for thirty-something years. I appreciate that now, not only do you continue to support us, but you let us honor these boys in front of everybody.
Okay. Coach Kathy Wright will now speak briefly about Laurel Bond, who led Huntington's field hockey team to its greatest season ever. She's an all-state player.
Our varsity field hockey team had an amazing season this fall. It was such a great group of girls that have been together for so long and to coach them was just such an honor. I'd like to thank my assistant coach, Allison Conlin, for all her help and support this season. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize and also thank our JV coach, Hildy Stanford, and our middle school coach, Marissa Kaplan, for helping to build such a strong field hockey program with Coach Conlin and I. I would also like to thank Jim Hoops, our athletic director, for everything he does for our Huntington teams. This year, we started our season in third place in Suffolk County. That was the hardest group, that was the hardest that we've ever played. That was the most competitive games in season that I have ever coached. And we ended our season with an overall record of thirteen and three. Going into playoffs, we remained in third place. We progressed through playoffs to the semifinal county game with Ward Melville. The Huntington Field Hockey Varsity Team finished their postseason play with an overall record of fourteen and four. I am honored to recognize Laurel Bond as a gifted, talented Huntington athlete that led her team with one win after another. led her team with one win after another. Laurel received the All-State Field Hockey Award this year. Laurel is a four-year varsity senior midfield forward defender. She played everything for us, for Huntington, and a two-year captain. She was previously all-county in 2021. This season, she had 14 goals and six assists, ranking her as the ninth-leading scorer in Suffolk County and sixth in Division One. Laurel was the leading force for our team, finishing our season third in Division One, and she took us into playoffs. She has excellent, exceptional field awareness, seeing the entire field and directing her teammates. She demonstrated the ability to intercept the ball without hesitation with well-timed cuts, jabs, and blocked tackles. She played selfishly and would always look to find the open player to assist on goals. One of her strongest attributes was her ability to recover back on defense to prevent goals and stop offensive plays. Her skill and field presence has been noticed and acknowledged by every coach in the past two seasons. Laurel is the heart of her team, and she is continuously self-reflecting and challenging herself to improve each game. She left everything, Laurel, everything, out on the field. And as we entered into playoffs and faced two very competitive teams, Smithtown West in the second round and Ward Melville in the semifinals, Laurel was a dominating force. Laurel's powerful stops on the defensive corners allowed us to hold Ward Melville to the score of zero to two. Previously, in years that I had played Ward Melville, we had been zero and six, zero and seven. For us, that was tremendous, that was amazing, and Laurel played to the last whistle. Along with receiving the 2022, the 2022 All-State Award, Laurel has made the 2022 All-Northeast Region Second Team. She received the Defensive Player of the Year 2022. She received the Exceptional Senior Award at the Suffolk County Field Hockey Award Dinner. She made the 2022 National Field Hockey Coaching Association High School Academic Squad and was recognized as a Scholar of Distinction. She made the 2022 National Field Hockey Coaching Association High School Impact Senior Team. She played in the Senior All-Star Game for Suffolk County 2022, and she's valedictorian for her class. Laurel is such an exceptional athlete that Huntington High School was so lucky to have. Coach Conlon and I are so proud of all her accomplishments. It's been such a joy to coach you, Laurel, for the last four years. Congratulations, Laurel, on such an impressive field hockey career for Huntington High School. I will never, ever forget coaching you.
Girls' swimming coach, Christopher Helmke, will speak briefly about multiple-time all-state swimmer Catherine Monafusco.
My name is Chris Helmke. I'm a teacher in the district and I've been the girls' varsity swim coach for quite some time now. Coach Meg and I have been coaching the girls' varsity, and she's just an incredible person. I want to thank her right now for all the times put into swimming and her support. But more than that, it's a privilege to honor this young lady, Catherine Monafusco, for her achievements in varsity swimming. Catherine swam for us for six years, came with us as a seventh grader, and she qualified for states five of those six years. We only got up to states four times because of COVID knocked us out one year, but, you know, the accomplishments were phenomenal. It was always wonderful to watch her swim. The competition's been fantastic over these years. Catherine is a specialist in the 100 breaststroke. Each year that she went to states and received all-state honors in breaststroke. Later in the years, she added the 200 freestyle and the 200 individual medley as well, but always came back from states as a winner. Catherine is also something that I should mention. Catherine's a Scholar-Athlete, and like many of these young men and women today, being able to maintain an extremely high grade point average while you're an athlete and while you're able to do what they do is just incredible. It makes me proud as a teacher and as a coach as well, and it's a true testament to our Huntington students. Catherine's going to be attending Villanova University in the fall. She'll be swimming for them, and we couldn't be prouder. Love you, kid.
about his state champions in the four-by-four hundred-meter relay.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Polanski, Mr. Hoops, Mr. Cuzak, everyone who's here, thank you for all the support you've given us down through the years and especially this year. These young men have done an extraordinary job for us here in Huntington. It was said best, actually, on Miles Split's Instagram, when they said, "Track and field runs through Huntington on Long Island." So that's because of these young men right here in front of you. We really didn't have a great league tournament. We finished like a distance fourth, but the following week at the counties, we finished close, a close second with four county championships. Matt had two, Kendra won the four, and then our four-by-four won the relay. And then just a week later, at the state qualifier, these young men did it again, duplicating in those same efforts. Kendra winning the six, Matt chose to just go in one event, winning the thousand to go upstate, and our relay also captured a victory as well. Now, with the four-by-four relay, what's so great about it is that you actually have two alternates that you can have, because when you are like Huntington, we have kids doing multiple events. And so you allow these alternates to run in the trials, and Ryan Santino did a phenomenal job for us here, helping us to get to states, and he ran as an alternate. And another young man, Johann Fajardo, who's not here tonight, he also ran as an alternate here in the counties and also at the state meet. So again, these young men have done an extraordinary job for us. They won the four-by-four state championship. And then a week later, at the Nike Indoor National Championship, they won the sprint medley relay, which consists of two people running 200, one running the four, and Matt running the eight, which was a tough race for him. None of these things would be possible. Yes, I'm there as the coach, but my backbone, the backbone of this program is our assistant coach, Coach Eli Acosta. Please give him a round of applause. And one who knows about running as an alternate is Jamar Francis, because he ran as an alternate as a seventh grader on our relay team, and coaches said, "You got to be crazy to put a seventh grader at the state qualification meet as an alternate on your relay." But when you trust your athletes, you trust them to do what's needed to be done, they get the job done for you. So congratulations to each of you. Kendra is heading to Malloy College. Matt is going to the University of Rhode Island. Jamar is going to still be here for another year with us here in Huntington, thank God. And then Ryan is heading to, over here, to Suffolk Community College, and we are very proud of these young men. And again, we appreciate all the support you've given us down through the years. Mr. Polanski, it's been a great ride with you during your tenure. You have quite a few state championships and indoor championships from track and field that you can have and say proudly. Thank you.
several groups of fine arts awards. Mr. Stolato, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank all the members of the Board of Education, Mr. Polanski, Central Administration, for taking the time tonight to recognize some of our wonderfully, amazingly talented young artists here in Huntington. We're going to do this in three groups. We are so fortunate here in the community and in Huntington to have multiple professional arts venues and organizations that both we can collaborate with, but also can give an opportunity for our students' work to be featured in a professional setting. And that's just one of the many things that makes, and we're seeing so many of them tonight, one of the many things that makes Huntington such a wonderful community. So what I'd like to do is bring up the first group altogether, and then I'll tell you a little bit about Long Island's Best. We are going to call up five young artists here. If you are here, please come up. Deanna Augustine, Azie Franciscovich, Annika Galvin, Sebastian Ramirez, and Sophia Tyne. So in front of you are five young artists who actually are about to be featured in Hexier Museum of Art's 27th Annual Long Island's Best Young Artist Exhibition. This is an exhibition that happens right down the road at the Hexier Museum of Art, and it actually opens at the end of next week on April 29th. Little opening ceremony coming up, and it'll run until June 4th. About 77 high schools submitted work toward this competition. About 553 pieces of work were evaluated, and 91 pieces of work were chosen to be featured at the Hexier Museum of Art, and we've got five right here of our amazingly talented Huntington students. So congratulations once again. and Ms. Kristen Singer for being the high school teachers to guide those Long Island Best artists. So a round of applause for our two staff members. Okay, next up, we're going to be calling up a group of seven high school artists that are our high school high arts showcase participants. That actually happened last month over at the Huntington Arts Council down the road on Main Street. So I'm going to call you up as a group once again here. We have seven students. If you're here, come on up. Victoria Bafumo, Caterina Damiano, Annika Galvin, Molly Heffernan, Gianni Portia Moriera, Nikolai Safarian, and Annabelle Young. Here comes Annabelle. Annabelle, fresh off the golf course, yes? Yes. So just to tell you a little bit before we take our picture about the high art showcase, Mr. Cuzak and Mr. Polanski and myself had the privilege of getting over to the gallery on Main Street a few weeks back. This is a high arts exhibition on Main Street Gallery. The show ran from March 17th through just yesterday on April 16th. And I do want to take a moment and mention all of the art teachers at the high school, our amazing art staff that helped to guide our artists and guide their work. We have Kim Valerio, Pam Pivard, Kesmira Mohanti, Heather Swan, Kristen Singer, Ayala Jeddah, and no end, actually, that's everybody. So a please, round of applause for these students. And one final group of students here, and I have to give a very large shout-out to Ms. Jessica Sims, who is our seventh and eighth grade, one of our seventh and eighth grade art teachers over at Finley Middle School. But Ms. Sims runs our studio art program at Finley, and she is doing amazing, amazing work with our students and preparing them to enter our art program at the high school. And she came to me with an opportunity for students at the middle school level to hopefully get their work featured in a professional setting. And I believe this is the first time in quite some time that we have middle school student artwork shown in this type of way, similar to what we've done for years at the high school. So I'm really excited to acknowledge these eighth-grade students and these artists who will be making their way up to the high school. So let me call you up as a group. I believe we have eight students. We have Angelene Ariega Vega, Anya Gilleski, Kate Gordon, Jordan Gross, Veda Gross, Talia Thanks for coming. So just a little additional information here. This is Finley Middle School eighth-grade studio art students who had their work chosen for exhibit at the Second Annual Middle and High School Student Artists Jury Show at Flowerfield in St. James. Their artwork was on display from March 4th through March 30th. These were their charcoal and graphite still life projects, and it really was amazing to see their And it really was amazing to see their work shown in this professional setting. So congratulations once again, and congratulations to Ms. Sims.
Okay, we were actually informed of this last set of honors after we had started planning tonight's event. But very, very special nonetheless, and we're proud to make this final acknowledgement this evening. And to do so, I'd like to introduce once again Principal Brendan Cusack, Huntington High School.
Thank you. My next duo that I'd like to introduce are two sisters who are consistently making an impact throughout Huntington. They are Andrea and Damaris Manny Munoz. You've already seen them, so come on up. I get to be up here twice, and you get to be up here twice. It's awesome. These two students are receiving the Students Building Bridges Award from the Jewish Community Relations Council of Long Island. And that's during the Holocaust Remembrance Day Commemoration, which is later in April. This is for their community work in bringing people together and serving as true role models in Huntington. Damaris and Andrea have shared their time, effort, and skills for many years with the Helping Hand Rescue Mission, and they serve as mentors in our New World Club in addition to the many activities, musical endeavors, and sports in which they are involved in at Huntington High School. These juniors simply do it all, and they do it every single day with the biggest smile you can imagine. We appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I am so proud of you guys and everything that you do and the way that you represent Huntington. I'm so happy that you're receiving this honor tonight and also later in April. Thank you, guys.
As they exit, one more round of applause for these fine young people. We'll take a two-minute recess just to allow everybody to move out. I know there's homework to be done tonight.
All right, we can get started again.
Chris, are we good? Okay.
So I should start talking? Okay. That brings us to our second item for discussion, which is the 2023-24 School District Budget and Property Tax Report Card. Take it away, Mr. Polanski.
Okay, I think if it's okay with the board, I'm going to do it from here. It's a quick presentation, and obviously, the ending proposed action is adoption of the 2023-24 budget along with the property tax report card. So we'll start with the state of affairs in New York State that I hope to be able to provide a period at the end of the sentence this evening, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen because earlier today, the legislature, state legislature, put together another package leading to a budget extender through April 20th. So there is no state budget in place at this point, which does make for just a drop of discomfort as we have no choice but to adopt our budget this evening. There is no flexibility here. The extender obviously allows the state to continue meeting payroll. It does not help school districts and other municipalities that are, no pun intended, banking on a finalized budget to inform their budgets. Reports do suggest that progress has been made on the major policy-related issues, which have nothing to do with education per se, and that's bail reform, housing, to name two of them. The primary educational issues that lie in the balance, as indicated here, the charter school cap, the executive budget proposal had a premise that would extend that cap or increase that cap. The high-impact tutoring set aside is a package of monies that's attached to the foundation aid increase that school districts received. For us, that's about $400 and something thousand out of about $4 million that we would be required to direct in a high-impact tutoring manner. And right now, that's under discussion. The Senate and the Assembly both recommend removing that set aside. It remains to be seen whether it will be removed or they'll find some middle ground between what the governor proposed and the zero that the two houses proposed. The other piece that lies in the balance is universal free meals. That has not been decided as of yet. So we do expect, based on the fact that the extender is only through April 20th, my hope is, I'm not going to say my expectation is, my hope is that this budget at the state level will be decided by the end of this week. So that said, this is what we're recommending for 2023-2024. This is unchanged in summative form from the presentation made at last week's board meeting. So you can see the 2022-23 current numbers, current budget that we're working with right now. The recommendation in the third column, column right in the middle, budget 146, 347, 091, with a tax levy of 113, 711, 800. The budget-to-budget increase, which I'll highlight again on the next slide, is 2.36%. The tax levy at 0.88%. That follows a 0.00% tax levy increase last year and a 0.33% increase the year before that. Listen, I know every penny counts here, and I also know that taxes on Long Island are exorbitant. But if you look at us in comparison to some of our neighboring districts on Long Island across the state, we've done a very good job of managing our debt and managing our expenditures while still very carefully managing finances so that we can offer our children the opportunities that you saw presented to you this evening and then some. The assessed valuation, interestingly, we did receive some information at the end of last week that was a little bit concerning, but how concerning, it's very difficult to tell. Each year at about this time, I asked Dr. Akron, and I should have mentioned this earlier, I apologize. Dr. Akron is out ill this evening. That's why she is not here, and this would actually be her final budget adoption meeting. So she was not happy about not being here this evening. But I asked her to reach out annually to the Huntington, Town of Huntington Assessors Office to grab an average residential assessment for properties, residential properties in the Huntington School District. That number came in on Friday at $3,357. That's not an assessed value of a home in terms of its market value. That's the number that's used to calculate a tax bill. Usually, we're in the 3,400, 3,415 area. So that number was a little bit lower than expected. And I bring that up now because we projected and assessed value a flat movement from the 4,4851, 997 that is in place, the actual number for this year, and the projected number for next year. We left it unchanged. It's not a number that we get to manipulate or negotiate. It's a number that will impact the tax rate one way or another. We do not expect it to venture far from that 4,4851, 997, but based on looking at a lower average assessment on the residential side, it is possible that may fall lower. It's possible. It's unrelated because it doesn't include anything about commercial properties. But again, that does not impact our budget. It does not impact our tax levy. It will, that assessed value, at the end of the day, we receive that sometime in October. It will determine the actual number on the tax bill. Whole nother collection of problems that come with the fact that we don't gather our taxes here. The town does not collect our taxes until after the school year begins, which is the reason we have to take out or sell tax anticipation notes to cover some of those expenditures until we receive the tax levy or the taxes from our residents. But again, that assessed valuation number is not settled until October. And the rest of it is all summative in nature. So again, we're looking at a 2.36% budget-to-budget increase from this year to next year and a 0.88% tax levy increase. And that also matches the tax rate expectation or the increase expectation, primarily because we're leaving that assessed valuation number flat for now.
Which is the same on the next slide.
Correct. And there are your numbers in summative form. Okay, moving through this quickly, I presented a version of this during the last meeting as well. Just some of the things that we consider as we plan a budget each year. And once again, I've done it before, I'll do it again. Thanking the principals, the directors, all of the various budget managers, as we call them throughout the district, that start back in September, at the end of September, beginning of October, looking at their current year's budget and looking at what they believe they're going to need or project their needs for the following year. And we go through many iterations of departmental budgets that allow us to get to the point where we are today. So we're always looking to align with our district mission, core beliefs, annual goals, looking to support. There's a slew of new courses, another slate of them to be presented shortly this evening. New programs K through 12 that we're very proud to have developed in consultation with our staff here. Particularly in the wake of the pandemic, we're looking to, at the very least, maintain class sizes. And in some places, depending on where, which school, and what the grade levels that are rolling up look like, possibly reduce class sizes, enhance our multi-tiered student supports and response to intervention programs, district facilities, based on a five-year capital plan. Most of that is reflected in our capital proposition, but there is a transfer to capital in the general fund as well. And we're always looking at long-term fiscal impacts in terms of anything we can. And 2024-25 could be a potentially challenging year because the foundation phase in is done and the federal stimulus funding, the CARES Act, the CERSA funding, the ARPA funding, it all comes to an end before the end of the 24-25 school year. So there may be a different type of decision-making process when we get to that point. So some of the notable additions, not to read them to you, but staffing, we spoke about that a few meetings ago. There are, I believe it was 11 and a half or 12 and a half, 12 and a half total positions, that includes a teaching assistant position as well, that have been recommended district-wide in various places, K through 12, buildings and grounds. And there are more, there are reductions as well in some areas. But just to give you a sense of some of the more costly additions, a construction manager, this is something we're going to need this summer primarily because our district facilities director is retiring, and we have a slew of work being done across the district this summer, which is shortly to be approved and ready to go. I-ready implementation, that is something we've already implemented very successfully at the middle level. Now we're bringing that down to, it is a diagnostic assessment and certainly a data generating process that helps us to address individual student needs. We're bringing that down to the elementary level, so it's the software itself and the professional development to go along with it. And as the board knows, 250,000 is allocated in the general fund budget for one specific capital project, the high school greenhouse reconstruction. And if all goes as planned, depending on how this state budget ultimately turns out, we would receive the state aid on that back, state aid back on that during the first year following. Typically, it's a multi-year amortization process, but we get about the 40% return on that investment the following year. So in sum, what's going to be on the ballot on May 16th? The 23-24 budget is proposition number one. Budget is always proposition number one. Proposition number two is the capital reserve appropriation, the capital proposal. And again, just a reminder, those projects are funded via monies that are already in a number of building improvement fund or capital reserve accounts. This is money that's there, but by law, we require voter approval to release those monies for the capital projects that we have on the proposition itself. The fact that the money is there, there's no impact on the levy, there's no impact on the tax rate, there's no impact on taxes at all. If these projects are not approved, we must put the money right back into the capital reserve accounts. The money cannot be used for anything else. In that, we are proposing a tax levy increase this year, as below 1% as it may be. If the voters do not approve a budget, there is a contingency budget that has to be built. It has already been constructed. Just some of the things that impact school finances, district finances, when a contingency budget has to be adopted. We have to pull out equipment purchases. We've got to remove the bulk of professional development and conferences. We've got to remove most contracted and consultant services. We've got to adjust the percentage components of the three-part budget administrative capital and program. We have to restrict public use of school buildings and grounds. These are not our rules. This is what goes along with this type of budget. Reduce use of reserves and appropriated fund balances, revenue sources, some of which we have in our budget as we speak. So we would have to reduce the current budget by 1 point, just over 1.2 million. And that includes 769,000, just about, just short of that in equipment. And this is what it looks like in tabular form. And you'll also notice, even with a contingency budget, there is a 1.55% budget-to-budget increase. And that increase is reflected in other revenue sources. So the fact remains that even though there is no increase in the tax levy because of the other revenue sources we're banking on, there would still be an increase in budget from one year to the next. But we'd still have to reduce from our current proposal, the 1.204, 607 million. And proposition number two, this is a repeat slide from the previous presentation on April 10th. Just again- Just again, list out the projects that are included on proposition number two. Primarily from our five-year capital plan, but also inclusive of two wants, and that is the Finley Science Classroom Reconstruction and the installation of lighting on the new turf field, which is actually on the slate to be approved, the field itself, bid award on tonight's agenda. As I mentioned, the two asterisks, the two asterisks there. Number one, the $250,000 for the replacement of the aluminum framing of the greenhouse at the high school. That is not in this proposition, it's actually in the general fund. And we did that by design because we anticipate being allowed to put one $250,000 project in the general fund and get the full aid back the following year. That's in the current state budget proposal. And just a reminder that the Finley Science Classrooms and the high school lighting, that is not included in our current five-year capital plan, primarily because they are not necessities, although the science classrooms and prep room in between are certainly, they leave much to be desired as compared to the two new classrooms and prep room that we prepared a few years back. And timeline, just to kind of go back and look at where we are now and the two items remaining. April 17th is today's date, this is the night that the board is going to review and adopt a budget. Public budget hearing on May 8th and the vote itself on May 16th.
So before we make any comments or ask any questions, I'm going to ask for motion. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt a budget for the 2023, 24 school year in the amount of $146,347,91 to be placed on the ballot for the May 16th, 2023 annual vote and election. It is further recommended that the Board of Education approve the associated 2023, 2024 property tax report card. A motion from Bill and a second from Tom. Okay, so now, does anyone have any questions? Well, I'll just start off by thanking Dr. Acker and her team and Mr. Polanski. And I am confident that Mr. Hender and Ms. McCoy had had a hand in the budget as well, along with all of the other administrators, the principals, the directors. It takes an army to create such a responsible budget. And just year after year, I'm blown away by the amount of work with accuracy and fidelity that goes into this process. And I'm, thank you is not really enough, but that's what I have to say.
And I'll just re, I'm sorry Kathy is not here this evening to be present for this because this is, a lot of time and energy from her and her staff go into, it's very difficult to do this when you have so many things going on at the same time. And I can speak for myself as well, but you know, sometimes I know we've got to put ourselves in a position where you have to look at the numbers in uninterrupted fashion. And you know, it's a process. And as you mentioned, army, everybody in this room this evening and all those that work with them had a hand in this. So I think it's a very responsibly constructed budget. I think it addresses the needs of our students and our families here. And it's something we can be proud of.
All right, then, all in favor? That is all in favor. Thank you. Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education review as a second read and adopt revised board policy 4421, non-bargaining unit staff, terms and conditions of employment. I'll take a motion from Teresa and a second from Michelle. Questions? I think we discussed it last time thoroughly. Okay, all in favor? That is approved.
Thank you.
Ms. McCoy?
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CPSE submissions as delineated.
A motion from Bill and a second from Teresa. All in favor? That's everyone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached district shared decision-making plan revised for the 2023, 2024 school year.
A motion from Kelly and a second from Xavier.
Since the draft plan was reviewed and adopted by the board in March, we've received some additional feedback that consisted of the following. Clarifying language, we removed an appeals process that was not required. And we added two sections titled Means and Standards for Evaluating Improvement and State and Federal Requirements for Parental Involvement, which are required by regulation. They're minor changes to the plan, but we wanted to have it updated and prepared for rollout in the 23, 24 school year.
Thank you for finding it. Does anyone have any questions about those changes? And all in favor? That's everyone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve revised advanced placement computer science principles for initial implementation in the 2023, 2024 school year.
Motion, Michelle and a second from Teresa.
So this AP Computer Science Principles course was already approved this winter for rollout in the 23, 24 school year. After attending a conference with Siena College, Dr. Grissani, our computer science teacher, Mr. Wagner and I took a deep look at the cost benefits and curriculum that varied between Siena and the Project Lead the Way curriculum that we were considering for the introductory college-level computing curriculum. The benefits to partnering with Siena are huge. They cut, it's a dual enrollment course, so they can have college and/or AP credit at $200 per course. Free and reduced lunch students get the college credit at no cost. We have access to free curriculum. There's a community of other computer science teachers, which for Mr. Wagner, who is the only computer science teacher at this time, many districts are in the same situation where if you partner with Siena, you have this whole network of teachers that you can now collaborate with, communicate with, get ideas from. So he's very excited about that opportunity. Free staff development, access to many new resources, weekly lesson planning, projects, professional development for our teachers once a month. I could go on and on, but it's really a great opportunity and we thought it far outweighed the thought of using the Project Lead the Way curriculum. So we wanted to move forward with this with your approval.
Great. I just, as a general note, I'll just say that I appreciate that even though you had something done and in the books, that you, you know, were open to looking for something even better and saying, we want to make it better and improve it even before it starts. So I find that admirable, so I just wanted to mention that.
Two editors in a row like that.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes. Anybody else? Questions?
I just wanted to make a, just a quick statement here. Having the dual enrollment program for the, with Siena, perhaps if there's a moment where students are trying to get credit for this particular class, they're given an opportunity that this is a regular college credit. Perhaps if a university or college is not accepting AP credits for whatever reason, they're kind of covered on both ends, correct with this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's a great job.
We couldn't pass it up.
No, no. And you're probably aware, but in the course proposal attachment, there is a list of those benefits in public views, so.
All right, then, all in favor? That is everyone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve instrumental methods for initial implementation in the 2023, 2024 school year.
A motion from Xavier and a second from Michelle.
So this class is, this is very exciting. I, it was, Mr. Stolato brought this to our attention and we thought it was a great idea. This class will give our students a chance or a second chance to be part of our wonderful instrumental music program in Huntington. Our numbers have been, you know, a bit lower since COVID. We've had some students that may have had an inability to get to early morning rehearsals and maybe they have not played their instrument for the last couple of years. So this opportunity allows students to begin playing their instrument every other day in a lesson setting, so they'll progress quickly. They'll reach a certain level of proficiency by the spring concert and will be able to perform at the seventh-grade band concert, and spring concert, of course. I'm sorry, the seventh-grade spring concert, and then be placed in the eighth-grade band the following year. So this really is a second chance at picking up an instrument and getting involved in our instrumental music program.
It's amazing. I don't know if, you probably did think of this, but I'll just say it publicly anyway. From personal experience, I had a child who did not pick up an instrument in the appropriate grade, mainly because of his development at the time was not appropriate really for him to play an instrument. But possibly in seventh grade, he would have had better routine skills, better attention skills, and we would have known about his musical abilities and would have benefited from something like this. So I personally think it's amazing.
And this would replace their general music course, so it's not an increase in staffing. So it really is a win-win for kids and we expect some good numbers in this class starting next year.
Fantastic.
No pressure, Mrs. Stolato.
Just to throw in the fact that Mr. Stolato has really been working extraordinarily hard to look at the schedules and how we structure rehearsals at all levels so that we can maximize participation. We had a big problem this year, and it was a good problem to have to a degree, where we had so many more children participating in the early morning programs that we had to redesign transportation to be able to accommodate all of them. And that's effort right there, we appreciate it. We're growing, and that's a good thing.
All in favor? That's everyone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve visual journaling for initial implementation in the 2024, 2025 school year.
A motion from Teresa and a second from Tom.
Visual journaling is a reflective process that involves exploring concepts, ideas and thoughts to understand and create personal meaning. Through visual journaling, students of all levels of artistic ability and experience will gain greater skill and knowledge in using a variety of materials, mediums and techniques with an emphasis on experimentation and personal expression. Students will critique their own work and the work of others, provide peer-to-peer feedback and reflect on both their written and artistic work to hone their skills. Students will also learn bookbinding techniques and create a variety of journals that will be filled with their own art.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, once again. Mr. Hender?
All right, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve personnel items on schedules 5, 8 and 16.
A motion from Michelle and a second Xavier. All in favor? That is everyone. We have announcements?
Nope. We're good.
The last time I skipped over the announcement, so I wanted to make sure.
Yes, it's been a short time since the last meeting, so we're fine.
Okay, so that brings us to you, right?
Yes, on behalf of Dr. Acker, I am recommending that the board approve business items delineated in items I through L.
A motion from Michelle and a second from Teresa. Yeah, no questions? All in favor? That's everyone. Start with Xavier, yeah?
There is an announcement, and it's actually a nice trend that we're seeing. These big donations are nice, but I'm going to preface the announcement with something that I found that I think is giving a little history on who the donation's from. An accomplished musician and Huntington Union Free School District music teacher, Ms. Schumaker, enjoyed a three-decade-long career as a Blue Devil marching band director. Ms. Schumaker's love of music and her talent was inherited from both sides of her family when they were music educators and opera singers. She saw her first parade at age four and fell in love. Ms. Schumaker began studying a clarinet as a fourth grader and later marched during the opening ceremonies of Disneyland Anaheim on July 17, 1955, and in four Tournament of Roses parades in Pasadena. A graduate of Downey High School in Modesto, California, Ms. Schumaker studied at Long Beach State for two years and then accepted a full scholarship as the first chair clarinet at the University of Nevada Reno. She later moved to Columbus, Ohio and took classes at Ohio State while working in a music store there. Ms. Schumaker accepted a teaching position at Huntington Union Free School District in 1967, initially working at Flower Hill and Woodbury Avenue School. She later became the Finley Junior High School Band Director and moved to Huntington High School in 1982, where she spent 15 years as a teacher and marching band director before retiring in 1997. And now to the announcement, the estate of Linda Schumaker would like to donate $120,250 to establish the Linda Schumaker Blue Devil Scholarship Fund in memory of Ms. Schumaker, a former Huntington teacher. This scholarship will provide financial support for students pursuing a degree in instrumental music education.
Quite a legacy. Quite a legacy, I said.
Absolutely, yeah.
Some of those students taking that new instrumental class are future scholarship recipients.
That's right.
Very possible.
That's right. Thank you, Xavier.
Of course. Just pleased to announce you're looking at it, but we've all, as school districts, had some difficulties with the short staff at the Office of Facilities Planning at the State Education Department. So we've pushed hard to make sure that our capital project proposals architecturally, on an engineering basis and on a fiscal basis have been approved, and that is in fact what has happened. So this evening, the board has, thank you for accepting the bid awards for the last year's voter-approved projects, the turf field in Huntington High School, the roof replacement and roof replacement at both Huntington High School and Jack Abram Stem, and the parking lot reconstruction phase two at Finley Middle School. Those will occur on a timely basis.
Very exciting.
Yes.
Thank you for your advocacy in that area. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to, oops.
Sorry, we just awarded the bids. When are each of those projects expected to start?
This summer.
This summer.
This summer, right, these are voter-approved in May of 2022, so.
The contractors were all ready to go.
Right. We had everything prepared for this moment, but unfortunately, until we have the building permit in hand, there was nothing we could do to award the bid, so we had everything lined up as far as we could go legally. And then fortunately, we were able to get the final step completed.
So that also means to all the community folks that we're going to be down afield for the summer, right? Going to be torn up.
That's correct. Well, that area, yes, for sure.
Are we anticipating a completion date at all for those times?
I can't give it to you off the top of my head, assuming all goes as planned. I actually, I think there was some increases in cost as compared to last year, but manageable and still where we need to be in terms of being under the budgeted number. Unfortunately, the land required no remediation, which certainly health matters, but the exact timeframe we're going to do it in is quicker timeframe as possible, making sure the job gets done right. And this will include obviously, you know, some drainage and conduits, et cetera, that have to go along with it, so. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our second public commentary. I won't repeat the rules, if anyone would like to come up, say anything. If you're not sure of the rules, I can let you know, but you have three minutes and really any topic other than personnel or something related to a student. Okay, I see nobody, right? Oh, did you want to come up? Just come up to, just, I'm sorry, just come up. So please identify yourself and your affiliation, as long as you're a district president or a staff or faculty member, and please sign on the form that Mr. Stein just presented.
So I'm Brandon Roth, I'm a resident and taxpayer at Huntington. I had a question about the turf field. Is that appropriate?
You can ask the question, if it's simple, we can answer.
Yeah, so are we using the same contractor as before? Is it going to be the same turf as the football field?
I don't believe the bid was awarded to the same contractor we've used before, but this has all been vetted through our architectural firm and it is going to align with the field that's currently in place.
Okay, so we're using different turf on the field, I mean, that's.
Well, it's not different turf in the field. And I don't want to frame this as a conversation, but you can see the bid award and all the specs that go with it on the item on the agenda tonight.
Okay, am I allowed to ask why?
That's not a question for this evening, but you're welcome to call the business office tomorrow and they can. When we go to, I will explain it to you. When we go to bid, we are obligated to accept the lowest responsible bid. So there is a legal obligation to accepting a bid that results from a process like this.
Because it's a public bid.
Okay, I'm just curious, like, if you turf half your front lawn and it worked for the past 10 years, why wouldn't you re-turf it with the same turf? Why would we get different turf for the other half of the lawn? It just doesn't make sense.
I believe you're making assumptions right now, and I will encourage you to call our business office tomorrow and they can give you any specifics.
They'll give you lots more details than we can right here.
Okay. Thank you.
At the district, at the central office. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, any final comments by board members? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Xavier, Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone, thank you.